I just want to say hello, Mr. Mayor and Allen Becker and one of your constituents. We're here for pancreatic cancer awareness.
It's just after 6 o'clock. This is October 6th. Before we start tonight's meeting, we have a prayer led by Councilman Rick Mahalovich. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. For the hundreds of community volunteers that involve in the many fall festivals, downtown events, and celebrations in our city, they add much to the community's spirit and vitality of the city. For the many visitors and friends in these chambers, their involvement adds much to the integrity of the government process. For our city workers, who we recognized last week for their public service, they add much to the providing examples of hard work and stewardship of city resources. Let us pray that as a council, with the help of our citizens, to make thoughtful action that builds upon community and staff support. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Esther Clerk, to read, roll please.
Branch?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Costalis?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Hussey?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Scrivner?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
We have a quorum. Is that on, Bill? Thanks, sir. Next, if I could have Allen and Debbie Becker come to the podium along with their families, please. I have a proclamation to read tonight, and it's about pancreatic cancer. Whereas approximately 46,420 people yearly will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 39,590 will die from the disease, with 860 of those deaths in Missouri in 2014. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the fourth-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States and is projected to be the second by 2020. Whereas pancreatic cancer symptoms are exhibited in the late stages, thus 73 percent of patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94 percent die within the first five years. The Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national association serving the pancreatic cancer community here in the city of Jefferson, helping those that are currently battling this horrible disease, as well as those who have lost their lives, and those that are committed to nothing less than a cure. Now therefore, I, Eric J. Strump, Mayor of Jefferson City, do hereby proclaim the month of November as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Allen, Debbie, welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just say a few words. I am a pancreatic cancer survivor. I was diagnosed almost exactly a year ago today. I have been through 19 rounds of chemotherapy so far, and probably the reason that I'm here today is, as you read, 70-some percent of us don't even make it one year. So it is an important cause. I would like to mention that a local firm, mattress firm, does support pancreatic cancer very highly, and during November, if you visit there, they will make a donation to the pancreatic cancer network. So we just returned from a very heartwarming visit to St. Louis, where the PanCan.org had, I believe there were almost 3,000 runners and walkers that raised funds of over $250,000 for pancreatic cancer research. So it was nice to see everybody. A number of survivors were there, about 20 of us, I believe, and hopefully there will be more next year. So you really covered everything else, Mr. Trump, so thank you.
Well, Allen, thank you for being here, and appreciate everything you and your family had to go through, obviously, during that. And I have several copies here for you and people within your organization of this proclamation, if you'd like to come forward. How about a round of applause? Next, under number five, we have public hearing, which deals with our 2014-2015 city budget and the 2014-15 grocery receipts utility tax. At this point in time, we'll call in our newly-named Finance Director, Mr. Bill Betts. I'm sorry, Finance Director, and the official title is?
Finance and Information Technology Director.
There we go.
There you go.
Thank you, sir.
Just give a brief overview of the budget. We've been talking about it for several weeks now. We do have a budget meeting scheduled for Thursday night, at which time I think we'll be talking about the parking lot items and any other discussion that the committee would like to discuss. This year's budget in the general fund is $29.5 million. The overall budget across all the funds is $58,310,000. The general fund budget is roughly 2.5 percent increase from what we've seen in the past. There is a few items in the general fund that are noteworthy. Here is that there's a 2 percent pay increase included in the mayor's budget. There's an additional holiday at the cost of $60,000 there. There's also a 10 percent increase built into the budget for insurance. There is a split between the police vehicles, five police vehicles out of the general fund, four being recommended out of sales tax funds there. And then the vacancy savings and SIP program that we've done in the past has been done away with as part of this budget that's been recommended to the council. Happy to answer any questions? As far as, I should mention, the grocery receipts utility tax is also something anyone can get up and speak on. There was no recommendation to increase that. Our grocery receipts utility tax, or the GRT tax, as we refer to it, is 7 percent. So it's been that number for quite some time. So happy to answer any questions, or sit down and let others speak.
Any questions of the council bill? All right, anyone here to speak on behalf of the public hearing? All right, the public hearing will officially be closed, and we'll be hearing more about that as time goes on. And Ralph, I think that meeting, is it 5:30 this Thursday?
5:30 on Thursday.
Thank you Chairman Bray for doing that. You did an excellent job. No appointments under this meeting. Number seven, presentations from Bill Lockwood, and I don't think he's here.
Yes, I don't see Dr. Rome this evening, but I can hopefully fill in on what's occurred since we last met. The university had requested a new scope of services, or additional services with the Architect Architects Alliance on this project. The Parks Commission authorized a cost-share agreement with those services, and so that preliminary work is already underway for initial design work. That'll include floor plan preparation, as well as some cost estimates in the early stages. Our Parks and Recreation Foundation also authorized us to reengage our feasibility study consultant, Ballard King and Associates, to assist with preparation of budget for the facility, also help us identify the elements that will be necessary to go into a memorandum of understanding as far as an operating agreement, and to help with some staffing and long-range revenue and expense projections for the facility. In addition, Dr. Rome and I have a meeting tomorrow to talk about the possibility of including Special Olympics Missouri in some kind of a joint partnership proposal. You may be aware that they've solicited requests for proposals from communities in Missouri to host their Training for Life campus, so we'll be discussing that to see whether it could be worked into our plans at this point also. So I think that's kind of the update on where we stand presently, and hopefully we'll be able to give you some more progress in a couple of weeks. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Lockwood?
Okay.
Ralph?
Bill, I just wanted to say thank you, and it sounds like you're making, Parks and the university are making good progress working together. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all. Bill, thanks a lot for being here tonight. Moving on, next we have the consent agenda. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion on the consent agenda. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Next, we'll move into bills introduced with the first reading of Bill 2014-67.
An ordinance amending Chapter 26A, Purchasing and Finance of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to the purchasing authority of the city administrator.
Mr. Hilper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This requires a little bit more explanation than an ordinary ordinance might. But prior to our changes this past year in the purchasing rules, the city administrator was determined to have the ability to sign a contract where every year it had $25,000 worth of authority. So in other words, if it was $25,000 on a contract, and the renewal the next year was $25,000, well, $24,999 in the year after that. So in other words, one contract, two renewals. As long as the renewals fell under the $25,000, the city administrator was determined that he could sign that contract. The reason I say it that way, it was basically an interpretation from the Law Department in those years, under the theory being each contract, each year is its own contract. So that's why it was set up that way. We did the purchasing rules revisions, and it was, the language was changed in one part to frankly specifically address that. The concern being that one might have, you could spend an inordinate amount of money if you have $25,000 each and every year to spend. So it specifically limited that, well, I should say, it limited the city minister's authority to $25,000 total. So that changed a bit of the way that we do some of these things, because we have, I think it's 90-something contracts a year that would fall under that. And so when this kind, when it all got said and done, and we started to implement those things, purchasing and some other folks raised some issues about that, said, well, this is really going to tie us down. And so staff feels like we didn't probably adequately explain to you the impact of that change when we were doing those purchasing code revisions. So we've come back with a request to kind of set back to the way it used to be, which is $25,000 a year, and then if the renewal's less than $25,000, the city administrator would have that authority. It's important to note that the money still has to be in the budget, so if money's not budgeted, he can't spend the money. And there are multiple layers of people looking at this from the, whoever's requesting the contracts, Finance Department, Law Department, city administrator, so there are several, multiple people actually looking at it. So that's really part one of this ordinance. The other part two is to just clarify a little bit on the second level. So we've got the 25 to 50, and then on the 50 and above, it goes to the consent agenda, and just wanted to tweak it to clarify that if the city administrator proposes the way we do it, we'll have a memorandum giving a brief explanation of the contract, and then that's how it goes to the city council. And then if, as we experienced not too long ago, if two people want to remove it, then you remove it, and then you vote on it separately from the consent agenda items. Kind of a complicated, I don't think it's complicated, but it's got enough history of it, I hope I explained it adequately, and we need to take this to finance, and they had discussion on it, and suggested there would be more discussion when it got here. So happy to answer any questions tonight, or if we want to save them until the next meeting, I'll answer them then.
Any questions by council member? All right, thank you, Drew. Moving on with the first reading of 2014-68.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Socket Telecom LLC for usage of city right-of-way and certain city conduits in exchange for internet bandwidth.
Mr. Bray, I see here that you're the sponsor of this. I understand there's a need to suspend the rules, is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
Is there any, are there two members of the council that would object to suspending the rules? Seeing none, the rules will officially be suspended. We'll have third reading.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Socket Telecom LLC for usage of city right-of-way and certain city conduits in exchange for internet bandwidth.
Mr. Betts.
Yes, as the clerk stated there, this is a contract with Socket. They have requested the use of some of our city conduits. Downtown staff has looked through those conduits and feel that there is room there, adequate enough to allow them to use it. In exchange, Socket is willing to offer us 35 meg's of internet bandwidth, which when we ask them to put a cost on it, is roughly $30,000 per year, is what that equates to cost-wise. It is a 20-year contract that does have a 10-year renewal with it. We have a similar contract for our fiber network with a different company, and it's worked out very well for the city, so we feel that this would be in the city's best interest as well.
Any questions of bill on 68?
This is not a, it wouldn't keep me from voting to agree to this, but I'm curious. As bandwidth in the past, it's just kept getting worth less and less and less?
Sure.
And you get more capacity. Is there any chance that 10 years from now that we're getting a lot less for our right-of-way than maybe?
There certainly is, as it moves forward. One of the keys for us is to, we wanted to make it large enough of a bandwidth pipe, as we like to refer to it, that we felt it would cover us into the future. Now, will it cover us for 20 years, and we won't have to spend any additional funds to supply the city? I can't say that. But today, we use roughly about eight megabytes, so you can see 35 gives us plenty of room for growth. As far as the $30,000 number, what will the value of that be, you know, 10 years from now? I'm certain, I wouldn't say certain, but I'm pretty confident that it'll be worth less than 30,000 in the future.
But not only does the bandwidth get cheaper, it also carries more. So maybe the capacity, 35 meg will carry a lot more?
Right.
Traffic, in a sense, than it did. So maybe it all works out in a wash.
Yep.
Any other questions or debate by council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have first reading of Bill 2014-69.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Section 3.5 of the Flexible Benefit Plan for city employees as originally adopted by ordinance 12,00181, as most recently amended by ordinance 15,00178.
Gail.
Thank you. Okay, this is our annual update to our cafeteria plan. This comes around each year as we negotiate benefit plans with the various insurance companies. Our goals this year were to offer our employees a selection of plans that would meet their particular health needs, and to come within the amounts, to come within the amounts budgeted in the mayor's proposed budget. Obviously, because of timing, we couldn't use the council's adopted budget. Working with Wall Street Insurance Company, we negotiated four plans with United Healthcare, and we are recommending the amounts that are listed in the ordinance as the city's share and the employee's share, with no changes to the employee's share and a less-than-10 percent increase in the city's share. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions of Gail on 69, first reading? All right, thank you, Gail. Moving on, we have first reading of 2014-70, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a municipal agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation for the interchange of Highway 50, 63, and Lafayette Street.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk indicated this is an agreement with MoDOT for the Lafayette Interchange Project. That project's recently bid, and this agreement stipulates several things between the city and MoDOT. Basically, just give you a real quick list here, but allows MoDOT to utilize our existing right-of-way to construct the project if need be, or maintain it. Also, there'll be a future restriction on Miller Street adjacent to the project. Also allows them to close Elm Street at Lafayette. Also indicates at the end of the project who maintains the various components of the interchange. And in this case, I might point out that the city is agreeing to maintain Lafayette in this agreement through the interchange, as we do currently, that we maintain that street. The MoDOT will maintain the ramps and the new signals, though, that intersect it. And then at the end, we will also take over the improved lighting and the sidewalks in the area. You have to answer any questions?
Any questions on 2014-70? All right, moving on, we'll have first reading of 2014-71.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with George Butler Associates Incorporated in the amount of $179,835 for the design of Stadium Boulevard, Monroe Street, and Christie Drive as proposed in the Highway 54 and Stadium Boulevard interchange traffic study report.
Mr. Scrivener, I see that there's a need from staff to suspend the rules? Is that your desire?
Yes, I move to suspend the rules.
Are there more than, are there two council members that would like to suspend the rules? If so, they'll be suspended. If not, they will not. Seeing none, the rules are officially suspended. We'll have third reading of 2014-71.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with George Butler Associates Incorporated in the amount of $179,835 for the design of Stadium Boulevard, Monroe Street, and Christie Drive as proposed in the Highway 54 and Stadium Boulevard interchange traffic study report.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, this is our design agreement for the project that is related to the interchange there at Jefferson, Stadium, and Christie. Also is related to the expansion of Capital Region. The city has an agreement with Capital Region to improve this area, as well as make Monroe two-way traffic from basically Woodlawn down to Stadium. So this agreement will design those improvements that are all east of the Highway 54, include a new signal at Monroe Street. As Clerk indicated, the cost of the agreement's just under $180,000, and this will be split 50-50 with the county, as well as the future construction of the improvements, which is estimated currently around $1.8 million. And that would, the $1.8 million does include right-of-way and design fees, so I'd be happy to answer any questions. And the next agreement is indicating the 50-50 split with the county on this, this project.
Any questions on 2014-71? Any debate by council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have the first reading of 2014-72, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Coal County setting procedures for joint city and county capital improvements, sales tax projects.
There again, Mr. Scrivener, I see a need here to possibly suspend. Is that your intention?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This is kind of a companion ordinance with 71, and we would like to suspend the rules.
Are there two members of the council that would like to suspend the rules? Seeing none, the rules will be officially suspended. Third reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Coal County setting procedures for joint city and county capital improvements, sales tax projects.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk indicated this is a city-county project agreement. Basically, it pertains to the project we just discussed for the engineering contract at Stadium, Christie, and Monroe, all the improvements east of Highway 54. Indicates which entity will be responsible for the project. In this case, it's the city, and that we will split the cost 50-50 with the county on these projects. You have to answer any questions?
Any questions of staff on 72? Seeing none, council debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have first reading of 2014-73.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning 2.62 acres from RU Rural to RS1 Single Family Residential for land addressed as 3136 Algoa Road, described as part of private survey number 2680, Township 44 North, Range 11 West, Jefferson City, Coal County, Missouri.
Ms. McMillan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are two bills that are related on this item that pertain to the same tract of land. First one, the rezoning bill from RU to RS1. This is the tract of land 3136 Algoa Road. This is looking north at the site across Algoa Road. This is the zoning map currently, and the area is shown to be rezoned in yellow. As you see, there's residential development proceeding along Algoa Road. The property is located on the east side of Algoa Road, about 400 feet north of Travis Court. The applicant owns about 80 acres of agricultural land between Algoa Road and the Morrel River. This request would rezon 2.62 acre parcel for the purpose of residential development. Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this application for rezoning at their meeting on September 11th, and recommended that it be approved. Since this is a rezoning request, we will have a public hearing on October 20th at 6:00 PM in the council chamber.
Any questions of Ms. McMillan or staff on that particular bill? Seeing none, we'll move on to 2014-74.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Strope Farm Ridge Subdivision, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Ms. McMillan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, continuing with this same tract of land, 3136 Algoa Road, in order to provide for the two residential lots, the subdivision plat has been proposed, and you'll see the two lots in the adjacent to Algoa Road, each contains a little over one acre. The remaining tract will be in, remain in agricultural use. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this subdivision at their meeting on September 11th. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on 74? Okay, well, first reading is 75, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri adopting a financial policy for the city.
Mr. Betts.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the financial policy guidelines. We took this to both the Finance Committee and the Administration Committee, also sent out copies to each of the council members to review. The policy itself contains four main areas. That's revenue, expenditures, financial planning, and purchasing. Majority of these are guidelines that we've been following today, or they're in the code or the charter somewhere. We just wanted to be more definitive, definitive of those particular items. I'm happy to discuss any questions that the council might have. I know one of the topics of discussion has been our fund balance. Earlier tonight, I sent out an email to all the council members at the request of Mr. Mahalovich for the fund balances back to 1992, so you should have our copy of that, your email. I know it's probably right before the meeting, so you probably don't have that information. So just yet or had a chance to review that information. So happy to answer any other questions about the policies.
Any questions for a bill on 75? Mr. Mahalovich?
Thank you for, that request was not intended for you to drop everything.
That's all right. Yes, sir, no problem.
Any other questions of bill? Thank you, Mr. Betts. Well, first reading of 2014-76, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri author- An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with American Tower LLC for an extension of the existing cell tower lease between the parties for the cell tower located behind Fire Station Number Four.
Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got two lease extensions tonight. This is for the fire, this bill is for the Fire Station on Ellis. It would be, we're extending the lease for my, for an additional five, an additional five-year lease with five-year renewal. So you're talking about potentially an additional 25-year lease. The lease will make a one-time down payment for the extension of $10,000 and then be increased to $23,100 per year. So that, currently it's $19,008, so it'll go up to 231. And we'll get the additional 10% down payment, and rent will be increased at every five-year renewal by 20%. This, y'all may recall, was one we've discussed in closed session a few times. And we've gone back and forth with them and feel that probably this is the best scenario we're going to get. And at Steve's request, they did finally agree to sign ahead of time. So they've actually signed off on the lease. Happy to answer any questions?
Any questions, Drew, on 76? All right, moving on, we'll have first reading of 2014-77, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with American Tower LLC for an expansion of the existing cell tower lease between the parties for the cell tower located behind the old Fire Station Number Three.
Mr. Hilbert?
Yes, this is, as Clerk mentioned, this is Old Fire Station Three. And even though we are in the process of selling that, we've carved that into two lots. So this is on a lot that we'll retain ownership of. The cell company asked to add an additional 700 square feet to the footprint. So they've got some equipment that they want to put up next to the tower. And they've agreed to pay the same lease rate that they're paying for the tower for this additional footprint. It'll increase rent by $1,190 per month or $14,280 per year. This one's pretty easy because we have absolutely no use for that property other than the cell tower lease. So happy to answer any questions?
Any questions, Drew, on 77? Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. Moving on, we have first reading of 2014-78.
An ordinance amending Chapter 21, nuisances of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to appointment of hearing examiner.
Ms. McMillan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance amends a section in Chapter 21 pertaining to the appointment of an administrative hearing examiner. Currently, the Director of Planning and Protective Services, or Designee, is specifically named as a hearing examiner. This proposed change will allow the city administrator to appoint a hearing examiner outside of my department. And this is useful if we need someone that's, has not been involved in a particular case. This will be very useful. This ordinance was previewed by the Public Works and Planning at their September meeting.
Any questions for staff on 78? All right, moving on, we have first reading of 2014-79.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri establishing election dates in the city of Jefferson, Missouri for 2015.
Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our annual ordinance setting the elections. This year, we'll have a race, the mayor's race will be up, as well as, of course, five council members, the municipal judge, and the municipal prosecutor. And that, this ordinance will set that election on April 7th, 2015. Happy to answer any questions?
Any questions for Drew on 79?
I guess I should add, just for, you all have particular interest in it, but declarations for candidacy and candidate endorsement forms must be filed with the city clerk between 8 o'clock on December 16th and January 20th, 5 o'clock on January 20th.
All right, thank you, Drew. Any other questions? All right, moving on to bills pending. Well, third reading of 2014-56.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 7 Financial Responsibility Required of the Code of the City of Jefferson to extend the requirement that motor vehicles maintain financial responsibility to motor vehicles registered outside of Missouri.
Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This will allow, this will codify the fact that you have to have insurance to drive inside the state. Currently, there is a state law on it, but not a city ordinance that does, to put this more succinctly, we'll be able to write these tickets and send them to municipal court. Councilman Scrivener brought up some issues, and is, of course, a very serious issue, but we are mirroring the state law here.
Okay. Any other questions of staff on 56? Any council debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have a third reading of 2014-57.
An ordinance amending the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri regarding operation of certain unlicensed motor vehicles by public safety and state institutions.
Mr. Henry, I see that there could be a substitute here. Is that correct?
Sure. Yeah, the ordinance, the original ordinance allows the state agency or a public safety agency to be able to essentially use golf carts on the street so long as that is approved by the police chief and it's operated in a safe manner. This originally came from, a request from Lincoln, but as we discussed it in-house, the PD also uses golf carts. And then as this ordinance was introduced, after this ordinance was introduced to the Administration Committee, Mr. Lockwood indicated that Parks also uses this. So the substitute would be to allow any city department or state agency to utilize golf carts with the permission of the police chief. Happy to answer any questions?
All right, is there a motion and a second to bring up the substitute?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Given by Mr. Henry. Thank you, gentlemen. Discussion on the substitute. Seeing none, roll call, please.
You could voice vote that because you're doing the substitute if you like.
Oh, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, now we'll be looking at 57 as substituted. Any more discussion? Debate by council members? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2014-58.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Furcon Construction for the Dunkland Street Crosswalk Project.
Ms. Marash?
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, this is a construction contract. It will construct the mid-block crossing adjacent to the Employment Security Building on Dunkland Street. The state, the state and the city had entered into an MOU, which the state would agree to pay for this construction, and then the city would maintain it from there on out. The, this project looks similar to our downtown mid-block crossings with flashing lights and signage, have bump outs. Furcons are local contractors, done projects for the city in the past, and the cost is $39,346. Happy to answer any questions?
Any questions of Matt on 58? Any debate by council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2014-59.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement between the city of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to construct Runway 1230 rehabilitation, edge lighting for Runways 1230 and 927, and Taxi Way B project at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Ms. Marash?
Thank you. And I'll just give an explanation of what the project does. There's actually six bills in a row here related to this airport construction. And I'll kind of give a summary here, and then maybe at each one, I'll give you just a brief introduction of what each bill would do. But basically, the, as you all well know, we bid a runway project at our airport. And it will, this project will reconstruct the main runway at the airport. It'll also include a new taxiway over to our crosswind, wind runway. Has new field lighting. The project will actually begin in the field, probably in the March-April timeframe. But once the contract's approved, the contractor can begin to acquire the materials for it. We anticipate completion next November, 2015. And during the construction, there'll be periodic closures, but there will be a 120-day main runway closure as well as a two-week closure of both runways. At that time, helicopters could still use the airport, but the runways will be closed. Total project construction cost, $6,181,141. There's also an inspection contract for $724,793. Basically, the city's contribution to this project will be a 6% match. And our match will come from the half-cent capital improvement sales tax funds. The, like I said, the six bills pertaining to this project are a mix of grant agreements and contracts with various entities to accomplish the project. And this first one is a grant agreement for our federal funds, which indicated they're 90% money, but the grant total is $6,215,340.
All right, any questions on 59? Matt, when will this start?
Like I said, you'll see probably actual dirt turning next spring. But, you know, once the contract's approved, the contracting begin to mobilize and get and gain materials.
Okay. Any questions on 59 or council debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of number 60, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement between the city of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to construct Runway 1230 rehabilitation, edge lighting for Runways 1230 and 927, and Taxi Way B project at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Matt, what's the highlight of 60?
The highlight is, this is a grant agreement which helps the city cover a portion of its grant, bringing our total share down to 6% instead of 10%.
All right, good job. Any questions by council or debate on 60? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Motion passes. Third reading of 2014-61, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant amendment between the city of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to design Runway 1230 rehabilitation, edge lighting for Runways 1230 and 927, and Taxi Way B project at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Matt, the highlights of 61?
Yes, the highlight is that this is a grant agreement for the design services change, which basically took the project from just an overlay of the runway to a new runway.
Okay. Any questions by council? Debate? Roll call, please.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2014-62.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a supplemental agreement with Burns and McDonnell Engineering Company Incorporated for design services at the airport.
Mr. Marash?
Yes, the highlight of this is, it is the actual contract with the engineer to do the changes we just mentioned that the grant agreement referenced.
So there actually really is red tape in government?
We just did three grant agreements, and now we'll do three contracts.
Any questions on 62? Debate by council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have a third reading of 2014-63.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Lehman Construction LLC for the Runway 1230 and Taxi Way B rehabilitation project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. And this is the actual construction contract with Lehman Construction. And the six, it's approximately $6.2 million construction contract.
Questions of the council on 63? Roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2014-64.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement between the city of Jefferson and Burns and McDonnell Engineering Company Incorporated for construction services associated with the Runway 1230 rehabilitation, edge lighting for Runways 1230 and 927, and Taxi Way B project at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Mr. Marash?
Yes, and the final contract, thank you, is the construction services contract with Burns and McDonnell to oversee the construction of the runway, testing of the materials, et cetera.
Any other questions of staff on 64? Roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hasi?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we will have third reading of 2014-65.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri adopting a budget and personnel classification plan for the city for the period of November 1, 2014, to October 31, 2015, and appropriating money in the city treasury to pay the cost of operating the city government during that period in accordance with the budget.
Mr. Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move 2014-65 to the informal calendar.
I second that.
Okay. It will be on the informal calendar for two weeks, right? Coming up again in two weeks from tonight. Okay, moving on to resolutions. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to accept resolution 2014-19. Motion and a second.
I move.
And a second, there we go. Mr., I'm sorry, Gail, I was looking at Drew.
Thank you.
Three of the four plans selected fall within the budget, and for the fourth plan, staff recommends that employees be allowed to buy up to this plan without any additional supplements from the city. Although the cost share of the plan is not included in this resolution, staff is recommending a fixed cost share from the city with employees being...being allowed to buy up or buy down as desired, or in other words, to pay lower premiums with higher out-of-pocket costs or to pay higher premiums with lower out-of-pocket costs. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions, Gail? On 2014-19. Mr. Henry.
So, Gail, just so the public is clear on these...on these resolutions, we're not specifically voting for a plan per se. We're just...this is just in regard to United Healthcare being the actual provider, correct?
Well, the recommendation is for the four plans that we distributed to you last week, which are the four plans that we've negotiated with Wall Street and with United Healthcare. There are two plans, the Navigate and the FlexPoint, which are kind of the middle-of-the-road plans.
Right.
Which we're recommending the cost share be based off of. And then there's a high deductible plan that employees could choose from, which would be kind of a buy-down plan for them, or a more traditional plan, which kind of mirrors our current plan, which would be considered kind of the buy-up plan for our employees.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff on 2014-19? Bob?
Um, Gail, the way you just explained that and the way I'm reading this resolution is not exactly the way I understood your explanation across the hall, but maybe it was that I just didn't understand it correctly. But I...just kind of repeating what I think I just heard you say is if this...if we pass this resolution, we are basically saying that we endorse the four plans as was presented to us last week. So if we have reservations or would like to see some change to the...to those plans, and I realize the prices that you have are the prices you have, but if...if we are interested in some change in the offering or the design or what have you, then we shouldn't vote for this resolution. Is that what...is that what you're telling us?
Right. If you're recommending a different plan design or you don't want to select those plans, then I would recommend you not approve the resolution. But if you're just looking at changing the staff's recommendation on the cost share, then you could pass this resolution.
Okay. Give me an example of what you mean by the cost share, the percentage that the city's going to pay?
Exactly. Because that's actually in the cap...in the ordinance that we introduced, which was ordinance 2014-69, that establishes the cost share. That basically says the city is paying X dollars towards the health insurance, and then the employees would pick up the difference. But this resolution actually is asking you to approve the plans that we've negotiated.
Well, it was...it was my...I guess it was my thinking, at least, that we still had more time as a budget committee to discuss the, you know, what we might offer for employees. I'm still not totally convinced that employees wouldn't have actually come out better with the HSA plan, and I still personally want to do some number crunching on that and try to make a case, maybe, that that might benefit both the city and the employees. Now, you know, I may not come to that conclusion after I have talked to some other council members and worked on it a little bit, but I...I really haven't done that yet, because I thought we had more time with our budget meeting coming up on Thursday. But, um, so, anyway, that's where my reservation is. I have no reservation at all that we're ultimately going to end up with United Healthcare. I mean, I'm not questioning the work that the staff has done on that at all. I'm just questioning whether or not I totally agree with the recommendation as it's been presented, and I may ultimately decide that I do, but I'm just not comfortable that I...that tonight that I do.
I can understand that. And with the health savings account, the city's been a little bit reluctant in the past to introduce that. There's been a couple of reasons. One, in order to offer the health savings account, we always had to pay higher premiums for offering multiple plans. You know, health savings accounts are great for kind of young, healthy individuals. So there's a lot of people that I know are not interested in health savings accounts. So that's kind of why we've tried to look at options for the employees, to give them the options, because, you know, I agree with you, health savings accounts can be great for some people, but other people aren't comfortable with them. So what we look to do is to find, you know, a fixed point and some plans that the city provides X dollars, and the employees can then go with those X dollars, and they can purchase which plans they want. And if they want to save money, they can, and pay out-of...higher out-of-pocket costs, like with the HSA, or if they want to spend more money on their premiums and have lower out-of-pocket costs, they can. So I understand your...your concerns.
Well, and I...one thing that hasn't...and maybe it's been considered, I don't know, but one thing that I...I...some of the preliminary number crunching that I did would suggest a much larger contribution to the HSA than what your...your proposal suggests, and that might make it a lot more interesting to some employees if that were the case. I don't know. But...but like I said, I still would like to crunch some numbers.
Okay.
Mr. Prather.
Instead of taking a chance of voting this down because of the concerns, would it be appropriate to table us until we got...you know, get some additional information on the HSA? I guess there could be a motion to table.
Drew?
Well, the issue would be that, because the resolution only has one...yeah, I mean, you could. I guess it'd just be ordinary Robert's rule, so you just table it. The sponsor could withdraw it, whatever. We wouldn't...oh, I was going to say, we couldn't put it on the informal calendar, because that's only for bills, but if you just laid it on the table, I suppose you could.
Where does that put you at, timing-wise, as far as contracts and whatnot, Steve?
Well, I...my suggestion is going to be to...I agree with Councilmember Scrivner that the...the language is specific to United Healthcare. The plans are something a little more...are separate from that. I think you could adopt the resolution specific to United Healthcare. The specifics of the plans, I think, can come a little bit later, Thursday night, when we have that discussion. Now, I don't know if Gail disagrees with that. I know it's a little different than what we talked about, but the resolution is specific to United Healthcare, not necessarily specific plans. So that way, we can tell United, at least, that we're getting geared up. We've got something coming your way. We may not know exactly what that is, and we'll have...may have a better idea after Thursday, and if not, then we'll just go with whatever the timeframe, you know, allows.
Mr. Bray.
So this is not really time-sensitive?
Well, yeah, it's...it is very time-sensitive, but at the same time, you need to make a comfortable decision. So if you need more time, then...
How is it time-sensitive, then?
It's time-sensitive in that we have scheduled the end of this month, actually, the 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, to get the information out to the employees. We have employee meetings scheduled that day. We have...I already have United Healthcare and Guardian and Wall Street, you know, scheduled to come in those three days to talk with the employees and talk about the different options on the different plans and that type of thing. So the reason for doing that in October is because many of our employees have spouses that work for the state, and their open enrollment is going now, and it closes October 31st. So we have a lot of employees who, you know, want to be able to make an educated decision when they're looking at their spouse's benefits. So that...that's why we always work very hard to get that information to the employees by mid to late October, so...
Steve and Gail.
You know, if we go with, like Steve mentioned, and adopt the resolution as is, and then maybe Thursday night, we could talk further and make a decision on the exact plans, you know, I think we could still work with that just fine.
Steve, is that what you'd like to see done tonight? I mean, obviously, this resolution will allow you to continue to work with United Healthcare. It's obviously staff's recommendation as far as who we go with going into next year. Is that right?
That's...that's correct. I think it would be helpful for United to know that we're going to be dealing with them, and based on all the information we have, that really was the best proposal, and it's within the budget parameters that we had discussed earlier. The timing issues that Gail mentioned are certainly important, but there are timing issues. So we can change those timing issues, but it puts more of a crunch on the employees.
Just looking at the...looking at the calendar, if you go to the 20th, I mean, your employee meetings are that next day. I'm assuming that you need time with United to get ready for those meetings and whatnot, make the best case or whatever with the employees and what they may want. Mr. Scrivner?
I guess I have two questions. The first question, from a timing standpoint, if I understood you correctly, Steve, what you said is you want to let United Healthcare know that we are going to plan to move forward with them. So if we were to essentially amend this resolution so that everything below the background information, all the price...specific pricing was deleted, would that accomplish your need to be able to let United Healthcare know that the council intends to go with United Healthcare? And the second question is, if we put this on the agenda for Thursday night, would you still have enough time so that it be...it's on the Thursday night budget agenda and we take action Thursday night as opposed to tonight? Would you still have time?
I don't...the resolution doesn't have money in it, right?
Oh, it does.
No, Bob, I'm...I'm sorry, Bob, the clerk's still...
Yeah, so it just says United.
The summary has the figures, but the resolution itself does not.
Well, that...but it says "the attached," doesn't it? Maybe it doesn't. I guess another resolution refers to part A.
The City of Jefferson and its employees may select coverage for group health insurance through United Healthcare. That's what I was saying, that I think that just says United.
My mistake.
You're on deck. The rest of it, we can work out.
Okay. All right. I thought this was a part of the...
The other one, the cafeteria plan may have. I didn't pull that up, but that...there's a second reading time on that one.
That's probably the one that refers to appendix A. My mistake.
Now, if...if...if we're looking at just doing the health savings, then we may need to get some additional information from United, so we'll make sure that we get that request made to them.
Okay.
Ken, did you have a question? Tom's off. Got it? Okay. Any other questions on resolution 14-19 or debate? Singing down, roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Branch.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next we'll ask for a motion and a second on resolution 2014-20.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Description, please.
A resolution authorizing an agreement with Guardian for group dental, vision, life, LTD, and flexible benefits, TPA services.
Gail?
Thank you. As the clerk just said, this resolution adopts Guardian as our provider for dental, vision, life, long-term disability, and the flexible benefits, TPA services. Guardian has provided all of these benefits except for the TPA services for the last couple of years. They have agreed to offer the TPA services at no cost. The TPA is the third-party administrator for unreimbursed medical and childcare reimbursement accounts, if the employees choose to participate in those. It will also allow the employees to have debit cards for those. The net impact is an increase to the city of $2,250 annually with no change in benefits. And keep in mind, some of those benefits are, you know, the employees purchase those benefits themselves. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on 2014-20? Mr. Branch?
This is pretty minor, but I was just curious as to who did the TPA prior to Guardian taking it over.
Currently, this year, it's ASI out of Columbia.
Any other questions on number 20? Council debate? Roll call, please.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next we'll have...we'll ask for a motion and a second on resolution 2014-21.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved by Scrivner and seconded by Bray. Thank you, gentlemen. Description, please.
A resolution setting a policy for code enforcement.
Mr. Helper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second time an ordinance similar to...like this has come to the council, and it's...it's the council's expressed...or it's their expression of their intent in regards to code enforcement, how the staff...or their support for how staff could proceed. You know, code enforcement exists to keep a clean and safe city, well-maintained, so that other people's property values don't suffer. And as we all know, there are those folks in the city who just...who are recalcitrant in that regard and won't cooperate. And so the council identifies in this resolution that the city code empowers the staff to issue summons, to abate nuisances, and use administrative remedies, and even the police department can be involved in that as well. So the resolution encourages staff to utilize all...all the tools that it has and to do so progressively in order to affirmatively and proactively address neighborhood enforcement. So in other words, as people don't cooperate, to use more of the stronger methods that we have to fight these things. So this, I think, was passed last year and came back up again. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Drew or other staff on 2014-21? Mr. Graham?
So Drew, this here just reinforces what's already on the books?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, what's going to be done differently that's not already being done?
That's probably a question for Steve and Janice, but I'll go ahead and do it, because why not? I think the...the theory behind it is that the council wants the staff to know that they're going to be supportive of it, because when we...when we start dropping the hammer on people, they will eventually come to you and say, "The city is being too hard on me." And you're going to say, "You know what? We told the staff, you know, write...do abatements, then write summons, then send people to municipal court." So it's really an expression of support from the council to the staff, so now I'll let the people actually deal with it, tell you.
I would just say that we've got some meetings coming up on abandoned buildings and vacant properties, and we'll be making some suggestions to council on how to address those. In my view, some fairly aggressive positions on that. I don't know if Janice has anything to add to that or not.
Janice?
Thank you. Well, I think we'll work in close concert with the city administrator and the law department to select those cases that we want to prosecute, submit summons for. The staff has written 152 summons between November 1 of last year and today. Not all of those, of course, proceed to prosecution. Most of those are related to failure to maintain trash service or illegal dumping. So there are a few nuisance cases in there other than those, but again, we'll be working with the law department and the city administrator to select those cases that we want to prosecute.
And one of the first...I'm sorry, I was just going to say, one of the first steps in that was the changing in the hearing officer provision that you had on tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Scrivner?
And I want to point out, too, as Ms. McMillan pointed out, they've written 152 summons, and so when you use summons, then it becomes a matter for the municipal court, and that is now a matter for two elected officials that really have control of their own offices. The prosecutor has to prosecute, and the judge has to impose sentence, and so we want to give code enforcement folks all of the tools that they have, but I think sometimes the public forgets that they can only do so much. And I...and...but what we are saying is be aggressive, and in my mind, one of the reasons that...that I first proposed to introduce this a couple of years ago was that in visiting with our council, the city councilor, we were...I was told that there is on the books a persistent offender, I think is persistent, correct?
I think it's habitual offender.
Habitual offender situation, where if someone receives three tickets, which could be three consecutive days of violation, they're now habitual offender, and that opens up And that opens up the possibility for the judge to fine as much as $1,000 for each violation and a year in jail. Now, that's maximum, but there's some real teeth in that. And I guess in passing a resolution like this, you're certainly not asking that every person who has a violation be ticketed, and you're certainly not asking for them to be treated as habitual offenders. But when someone is clearly a habitual offender, I for one would like to see them treated as one. Maybe not a $1,000 fine, but certainly enough to get somebody's attention. So that's the purpose behind this. And, you know, I would hope that we would all feel like that we want that, you know, some teeth there so that our folks can actually have some impact on cleaning this up.
Thank you, Bob. Any other comments or questions or debate on 2014-21? Mr. Mahalovich.
Well, one last comment. Certainly appreciate the city administrator following up and going to be doing some work on abandoned buildings. I know there's a high-level interest from a few of us on that issue, and I look forward to hearing more from either committees and/or, when appropriate, in this, in the chambers on your progress on such. And I'm reminded that in the budget is also some need for some demolition dollars, and possibly we have an avenue now to provide more demolition dollars.
Bob?
But I, Councilman Mahalovich, in my mind, that misses the point, because that's what we're trying to get away from, is the city having to spend money to demolish properties and be the one that's spending the money to abate these problems. We want the property owners to have an incentive to, first of all, take care of their property and get it in livable condition. When they don't, we want them to be in a position where if demolition needs to occur, we have a way of encouraging them to incur those expenses instead of the city putting that on, that, those costs on the books and never getting anything out of it. Because when you take many of these properties and the city puts the cost of demolition into them, the lot that remains, especially when unpaid taxes and other costs are added in there, we can't get the money back. And so to tax bill people for abatement is, that's a losing strategy. We need to encourage people to pay for the abatement themselves.
Any other comments or debate on 21? Roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hasi.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll move into council discussion or presentation topics. Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible to have presentations from the gallery tonight, please?
Would the council abide by that? I don't have a problem with it myself.
And the reason I ask is, we were here for the public hearing, but you were so efficient this evening that we did not get an opportunity to speak.
Oh, okay. How many people want to speak?
Well, actually, three, four of them had to leave.
Oh, okay.
But, um, because...
Why don't we...
Three of them can't drive after dark.
Why don't we open up number 15 and, well, presentations from the gallery, if that is okay with the council?
There's still two of us that are here.
Okay. Come forward, please.
Thank you.
I thought earlier that you guys were kind of quiet, because I saw you there. I'm like, well, they didn't say anything, so...
Well, you were so efficient at the public hearing part. We were here for that, and I apologize, we didn't realize that it was passed.
That it was there, huh?
Yes, sir.
All right. We're on now. Welcome.
Thank you. And my name is Vicky Schildmeyer. I live at 1803 Tanner Bridge Road. And we did come this evening to thank Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bray, who's chaired the Budget Committee, and the rest of the council for including funding for JeffTran and Handywheels in the fiscal year 2015 budget. That's to begin November 1st, 2014. We believe that general fund revenues are very well-spent in providing public transportation for all our Jefferson City community. Citizens for JeffTran, which is the group I'm speaking on behalf of, look forward to assisting the Public Works Committee through the Public Transit Advisory Committee that will soon be appointed. Together, we hope to increase ridership, expand community engagement, and then hopefully expand or augment change transit services to better serve more people. We especially speak in support of these goals because many city residents who cannot drive or no longer drive due to illness, injury, disability, or declining health. Regardless of our age or declining health, we all need to go places, to shop, medical appointments, work, school, volunteer commitments, and meet friends. And by funding this service from general revenues, you make that possible for those of us who have the opportunity to vote for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Next, for the record, your name and address.
Hello, everybody. You all know me, I believe, Ashley Varner, mayor, city council, city staff. On behalf of Central Missouri Community Action Agency, that's who I'm representing this evening, a member of Citizens for JeffTran, and all the residents of Cole County that depend on public transit despite their economic stability, I would like to thank each of you for your support in forming a Public Transit Advisory Committee and a proposed maintenance of funds in the fiscal year 15 budget process. Our community will thrive economically when its residents can go where and when they need to go. This work is truly just beginning. This potential, the potential that this allows for our community is simply great. Voices were heard, questions were asked, and solutions will continue to be found. So thank you all for your open-mindedness, your collaboration, and your due process. Appreciate it.
Ashley, thanks for coming tonight. Anyone else?
I would just like to mention one thing.
Mr. Lee, welcome back.
You know, something occurred on Sunday. It just crossed my mind. I was being driven to church by the lady who always takes me to church. She used to be in our choir. And Sonia picked me up, as usual, on Sunday morning and gave me the ride to church. And as she's giving me the ride, she said, "I do have something I need to share with you, Wayne, and that is that I'm not going to be able to give you a ride anymore after November 1 because I'm going to be giving up my car. Not going to have that anymore." Sonia is 78 years old, and she's going to go ahead and give up her keys and stop driving, something that I easily understand. But after a person reaches a certain age, they go ahead, give up their keys if they want to, and it's not a bad idea. She said, "Our reaction time is not nearly as quick as it used to be, a number of things." She is eligible now for JeffTran, for Handywheels, and she'll be making use of that. And that is an example of how Handywheels can be very, very helpful and will be much more helpful for many, many people. Many people can gain a great deal in their life with JeffTran.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Well said. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to number 16, any council discussion on presentation topics? Any new business tonight? Any, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Costalis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to mention to Chief Schofield over there, on Sunday, I had the privilege of being at the grand opening of the new Fire Station 3. Fantastic job from the top to bottom. All the firemen were enthusiastic, whatever part they were playing and showing off the new facility or the equipment. Thank you for a job well done.
I'd like to echo that, and I think some of the other council members were there also. Very good job. And also want to thank Jason Turner. Obviously, Jason's had some issues outside of the department, some health things, and things went very, very well. And you did a great job cutting the ribbon with an axe. That's a, that's a great feat. Is there any other thing that you'd like to add about Station 3?
No, I just want to echo our appreciation to you all for being part of that and to the community for also showing up. We had a great turnout. I think we had over 200 folks that ended up showing up and taking tours, so we enjoyed the opportunity, and I'll make sure that I relay the appreciation to the staff.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Chief Schofield, I should say. Any other new business? Any unfinished business? At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve our closed session minutes September 15. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Aye. Bray.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hasi.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Motion passes. We are adjourned. Drive home safely, and we will meet back here in four minutes in these chambers.